We are scheduled to start, so we will do that. Just so that everyone doesn't realize that Mr. Roth will be taking over at 5:30 if we're not done.
Is that a threat?
That is a threat. If any long-winded discussions go on tonight, you'll have to deal with Bob at the end. All right. Ms. Garcia, phone roll call, please.
Eva Henry, Steve Odoricio, Jeff Baker.
Here.
Elise Jones, David Beckham.
Here.
Randy Wheelock, Sean Wood, Chrissy Fanginello, Anthony Graves, Robin Kneech.
Here.
Roger Partridge.
Here.
Gail Watson, Libby Zabo, Casey Ty, Bob Pfeifer.
Here.
Bob Roth.
Here.
Larry Videm, David Feldman, Aaron Brockett. Aaron Brockett.
Oh, here. I was listening. I couldn't hear.
Listening for his name to call.
Ann Justin, Lynn Baca, Rex Bell, Tara Radloff, Jeff Blue, George Teal, Jason Bauer, Doris Trulard, Carrie Penelozza, Laura Christman, Eric Holland, Richard Champion, Gail Christie, Rick Teeter.
Here.
Debbie Nasta, Catherine Whitman, Steve Conklin.
Here.
Joe Jefferson, Steve Yates.
Here on the phone.
Thank you. Jeff Deacon, Mark Gruber, Daniel Dick, Carolyn Scharf, Lisa Jones, Laura Brown, Lynette Kelsey.
Here.
Scott Norquist.
Here.
Sarah Shakaris Graves, Casey Brown, Ron Rakowski, T.J. Gordon, Mike Kilman, Brad Weasley, Stephanie Walton.
Here.
Shakti.
Here.
Jerry Bean, Isaac Levy, Phil Cernanek.
Present.
Winshaw.
Here.
John Peck, Gabe Santos, Ashley Stolzmann.
Here.
Connie Sullivan, Dan Greenberg, Colleen Whitlow.
Here.
Deborah Jerome, Chris Larson, Kyle Malika, Jordan Sowers, John Dyak.
Here.
Sally Daigle, Gary Howard, Rita Dazal.
Here.
Heidi Williams.
[laughing].
Eric Montoya, Herb Atchison.
Yeah.
Joyce J., Adam Zarin, Deborah Perkins Smith, Bill Van Meter.
Rita, you don't have to put up with it, harassment. I want you to understand.
Everybody is censured.
[laughing].
I don't know if we have a long enough meeting tonight.
There's a process for that, Rita.
Yeah, we have a process for that.
Yeah. Okay, moving on, the summary of the March 1st boardwork session is attached to Attachment A. Any comments, questions? We don't need to motion that to you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment. The Chair requests that there be no public comment on issues for which a prior public hearing has been held before the Board of Directors. Are there anyone in the public who has a comment that they'd like to bring forward tonight? Good, move on. First item up, Attachment B, Mr. Calvert, discussion of initial evaluation criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. There is a copy of staff's presentation in your packet. I will also give you fair notice that we're going to have some discussion questions later that are also in the packet in that presentation, so if you want to cheat a little bit and move ahead to kind of understand what we're -- when we put you on the spot, what we're going to put you on the spot about, that might be helpful. So I'll load up our presentation here. And we will also later be using these little clicker things, which hopefully everybody has one in front of you. If you do not have a clicker in front of you, just raise your hand and get our attention and we'll make sure and bring one to you. We do have a few folks, maybe at least one person on the phone, and I'll explain later how we're going to get you engaged using the clickers as well. So I'm actually largely going to be co-presenting tonight with Andy Taylor on my team. Andy gets the hard part of the presentation. I think I get the easy part, the intro and the conclusion. This is really a continuation of an item that you all started really in March, but I think it goes back a few months as well. We're going to share a little bit of analysis that builds on the conversation in March, but also way back in August of last year at your workshop, there was a request of information related to how the region is growing and ultimately converting land to urban uses throughout the region, that there's been a lot of work on our end, including some conversations with your technical staff to get to an approach that makes sense to share that information with you, so you'll actually be hearing about that as well. As I mentioned before, we are going to use the clickers in a little bit, but I -- we do have kind of a plan of attack for how to also get input from people that are joining remotely. Some -- a very quick kind of overview of the timeline, as I mentioned previously, we came to you in March to gather some initial input about how you would evaluate a coordinated growth management initiative. You may or may not recall, one of the things that happened relatively late in the development of the Metrovision Plan was a conversation of both the Board and amongst your staff about the current way that the plan treated our urban growth boundary, urban growth area program, and really just sort of recognized that maybe we need to have a conversation about, is that still the right tool? If so, how can we amplify what works best with the current program, or do we need to think about some other approaches? And so we really are following through with that directive from the Metrovision Plan. As I mentioned, today, we're going to provide you with some analysis that really is responsive to some questions that you've asked in the past, and then, as I mentioned, we will have some polling questions later that really will help set some parameters for staff. We fully anticipate working on this project over the next couple of months, but we really -- we need you all to give us some parameters, set some guideposts as to what success might look like from the Board's perspective, and then our hope is that we can spend some time working with your staffs to ultimately come back to you with a proposal or proposals about what a regional growth management initiative might look like. It could be the UGB program that exists today, it could be that with some modifications, it could be a different approach. Really, we want to hear a little bit from you all to help us be able to put something in front of you to evaluate what those proposals might look like. Back in March, we shared this map with you, and it kind of sparked some discussion, which we thought was actually really quite helpful. If you recall, this shows sort of growth areas looking into the future. Like, if you take our forecast, when we forecast out to the year 2040 and try to understand where population and employment growth is happening in this region, this map in broad strokes shares that information. While we do, obviously, if you remember, we are experiencing significant growth in areas that are not largely developed to urban intensities today, we're also seeing a significant intensification of places that you would always already think of as urban. But that was very much a forward-looking conversation, so today, we're going to share a little bit with you that's maybe more a timestamp of today and also looking back to, again, to help give you some information to, again, give us a little bit of parameters to help us understand going forward what you are hoping to get out of an initiative that really connects local growth aspirations with regional planning assumptions and what the region is really going to look like going forward over the next 15 or 20 years. So Andy will largely pick it up from here. You know, really, what, like I said before, I'm hopeful that what we're doing is pairing some information that you saw previously in March that was forward-looking with a look back on the past few decades, with really kind of trying to answer, if not conclusively, at least maybe pointing to some things that maybe are indicators that kind of look at this question or statement that's on the bottom of this slide. Yes, as a region, I think we all recognize that we are growing very rapidly, and we have grown very rapidly in the past. We're really trying to answer the question, does it look and feel different 20 years forward from when really the last time we had a conversation about that shared growth management legislation? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andy, kind of hit you with a lot of facts, figures, maps, charts, et cetera, so please don't be shy about asking questions. We looked at a -- we did a lot of analysis. We obviously tried to get it down to really kind of a conversation that we thought would be most helpful, so please feel free to ask questions so that we can make sure that you really are understanding what we're putting forward in front of you that really hopeful is helpful for -- we hope is helpful for the conversation you have at the conclusion of staff's presentation. So I'll turn it over to Andy Taylor. Andy is a planner on my team and is also really kind of the point person on our current urban growth boundary area program. So when your staff is really -- has questions about where you are on UGB, Andy's the person that they talk to, so he's very familiar with the program that we have in place today.
All right, well, I want to thank you for your time today. So as Brad mentioned, back in March, the map we just looked at, we were looking forwards in time, and so I've just got a few things looking backward on some of this follow-up analysis. We're just going to focus on two main points. The first is that in terms of jobs and population, our region is booming again. This might be somewhat of an obvious point to make, but we wanted to put this growth in perspective with some of the maybe more recent past, but maybe look out over the past 30 years or so and see how it might look a little different. But we also wanted to focus on what might look a little different this time around, and this is largely based on some of the feedback that we got in the March work session. And we want to see, are there potentially any lessons to learn as we move forward with a revamped or new regional growth initiative? So let me orient you to a little bit about what you're seeing here. We looked back for all the data points going forward. We tried to look back to 1986 whenever we could. Here, what you're seeing is the change every year, so this is what the region added or in some cases subtracted each year in these different data points. So in other words, if it's above zero, the region was growing in that area. So these are three related data sets. You're looking at changes in employment in blue, you're looking -- which that also helps drive migration, which is in green in the upper right. And then that also is related to the need for more housing, which you'll see on the bottom in orange. Some things to point out here, the employment chart probably shows with most dramatically the different periods that we've gone through in over this time. You see three distinct periods of growth. You also see two recessions separating those, the dot-com recession of the early 2000s and the Great Recession of the late 2000s, which was spurred by the subprime mortgage But there's an interesting period also in the mid-2000s. You can see where we weren't really seeing that much in migration at that point in time, but we were near our peak for adding housing. But any inventory we may have developed during that time is likely gone since migration levels are continuing to rise and housing starts actually still remain below that mid-2000s peak. Another thing to look at there with the migration chart is actually that we experienced more outmigration than inmigration as a region, leading into that growth in the 90s. Another way of looking at the housing that we've been adding over this time, housing starts are actually remain lower than during some of the past booms that we were just looking at. In recent history, we've built significantly more single-family dwellings than multifamily, but coming out of the most recent recession, multifamily has actually kept pace with single-family. Multifamily is near its earlier peak while single-family construction remains below its earlier peak. So to try and get back to the question of where this growth is actually happening, we've broken up that look back to 1986 into three equally sized periods. What you're looking at is a heat map, the darker the spot, the more construction activity there was related to housing. Comparing the first chart to the second chart, you can actually see many more spots of intense activity spread throughout the region in that second period from 1996 to 2005. Comparing the second period to the most recent, it's actually really hard to find some of those new hotspots. The areas where we are still having some of that single-family construction activity are largely in places that we had already seen some during that 1996 through 2005 period. The multifamily picture is also fairly interesting. Just a quick data note here, multifamily is any structure where we have more than one housing unit associated with that structure. So it's somewhat dependent on how the county assessor aggregates their information. So what you might see here are some duplexes or other attached single-family product in this multifamily category. Can you take a question? Sure.
Particularly relative to the multifamily, do you split that data out between multifamily for ownership versus multifamily rental?
We do not. This is strictly from the assessor's data, so we are simply looking at -- we compile that data. We often don't know.
Not your fault, but how?
Right. We can look at it in the census data, but we don't have that same geographic picture with it.
And with this, I mean, there's been a number of articles. I don't know if your data gets into it, but it seems that some of that net migration, the housing level hasn't kept pace, and so that what we're seeing is more households with unrelated adults.
Yeah. We don't necessarily see it, but we suspect, based on just a really low vacancy rate with housing, just that can barely keep up with just churn. Anecdotally, we hear those same stories about, you know, families doubling up or things like that.
Okay, thank you.
And so one of the interesting things I found between these three periods was that second period, that 1996 through 2005 period, and that more recent period, 2006 through 2015, where we're growing, those areas of intense activity have -- they're more concentrated in specific parts of our region, yet we've actually had more units being added over that So getting back to how the UGBA initiative sees this, we can try and talk about how where, in terms of the abstract language of the UGBA, what we were just looking at, just looking at data and heat maps, is a bit simpler because we weren't trying to make any classifications or other definition-driven determinations about growth. It was just purely looking at where that residential growth happened. The closest corollary to what we were just looking at in the UGBA initiative is what we call extent of urban development. Sometimes you'll also hear me or Brad or others of us call it a footprint as well. So the extent of urban development for a given year, current or past, is what you're seeing in purple here, just diagrammatically. It's not about UGBA. To get to that UGBA shape, that orange, you would have to add in what's shown up here in green, which is really about future urban growth. The difference is the purple, the extent of urban development, is what's observable by Dr. Cog's staff, using the Board adopted rules to make that definition and determination. Really, the only way to see what's in the green, that future urban growth, is in plans about growth. It's not observable and data sets are on the ground. From here on out, for this analysis, we're just looking at the extent of urban development. We're not looking forward to the green. One of staff's tasks here is to take a look using the adopted classification system and make periodic observations. The first was for 2006, but we want to see how that extent has grown and changed by taking another observation, and we have some data for that using 2015 data as inputs. So in terms of how big this new footprint is, our extent is now, on a preliminary basis, what we think to be about 757 square miles. The last time this came up, as Brad mentioned, this number was requested, and we've worked with local staff to help us address some of the issues with the model that we actually used to implement, the adopted development classification system. Those fixes that we've been able to put in place in the model haven't actually been adopted yet, but they are represented in this analysis here. The other missing piece, why we still call this preliminary, is that we do rely on local review. We're showing a range because we have some uncertainty on either side of this number, but we're pretty confident that it falls within about 39 square miles on either side of this 757 number. But local review can be a time-consuming task, so we just want to make sure that we have the right system and model in place before we go through that process so that the local staff really only has to go through that once. What does this mean in terms of our growth? Our 2006 observation was about 730 square miles. Our extent grew at about 3 square miles per year. Metrovision 2035 planned for an annual change of about 9 square miles. So keep in mind that this period does encompass the greatest global recession since World War II, but still, I think it is important to keep in mind that the growth expectations can change over the course of an initiative or plan, and that's definitely what we've seen over the life of the UGBA. This kind of analysis does obscure some of what's happening in terms of the growth in terms of jobs and housing. Just looking at housing here, a closer look will reveal that significant development has happened in areas that were already a part of the 2006 extent of urban development. Don't think of this extent as we observed it in 2006. It wasn't full or built out. Our development classification system has to draw a line around what it thinks that footprint should be, and it has to make some hard distinctions and choices, but the real world really isn't that hard and fast. And so imagine what you're seeing here is just a sample, a subset of the region, and we can add in the growth in terms of housing units that we've seen. Nearly nine out of 10 of the housing units we've added between 2006 and 2015 happened inside this purple extent of urban development that we observed in 2006. Just under one in 10 helped actually push that area out into what we've observed as new areas with that 2015 preliminary run. Turning attention to the non-residential side of growth, it's a little harder because unlike housing, individual jobs aren't time-stamped in the same way, so we end up looking at change and so -- or growth, and we split up the region into specific parts to try and tell that story. And so you can look at that growth in a couple different ways. One way that's pretty instructive is to look at how much did a given part of the region contribute to the overall share of the region's growth? In other words, what you're seeing in that middle column there of the share. Alternatively, you can look at how fast this piece grew relative to where it started, its growth rate. So we picked an arbitrary point in Denver CBD and broke the region up into different bands based on distance around that point. And you can see here that a majority of the job growth occurred between about 5 and 20 miles from Union Station. So at first glance, this looks like it's about potentially a decentralization of jobs. But what we're actually seeing, we went through an exercise to try and nuance this story of decentralization by identifying some example job concentrations. We're not a region that just has one major employment center. Some of the comments we heard back in March were about business location decisions and suitability, and many of these concentrations are places where our region has been working to connect with significant transportation investments. There's a wide range of types of concentrations here, and many we probably didn't include. Some of the smaller ones are an interesting part of the story, although not a big part of the share. They do have -- show a high growth rate and some of the different things that are happening throughout the region. Altogether, just these example employment concentrations that we identified make up about 40% of the job growth in the region between 2009 and 2014. There are always going to be certain types of jobs that are spread throughout the region just by their nature, retail, personal services. Other types of jobs are harder to concentrate, also because of their nature, certain warehousing, distribution, manufacturing. So these concentrations do tell a large part of our story, but not necessarily all of it, about where we're growing.
Could you, with that chart, not necessarily tonight, but add to it the numbers, because some of those percentages are off of very low bases.
Yes. That's a good point. And we do have a data-driven story up on our website on driver that takes a look at these employment concentrations as well and probably has a lot more of that detail as So to try and sum up some of these recent trends and maybe asking ourselves the question about which of these trends might last, multifamily construction, as we saw earlier in the slides, has a significant share of our housing growth. Here and nationally, homeownership levels have returned to levels more in line with their historic patterns rather than some of the peaks that were associated with the lending practices of the early and mid-2000s. So things like this might be contributing to this trend, among other factors. An interesting point about what might look like greenfield development, some of our analyses, especially with the extent of urban development as is observed in 2006, there's still a lot of activity in subdivisions that were plotted prior to the Great Recession. So these things can look like greenfield development and often are looking like development in places where they haven't been previously developed. But there are many parts of our region that are still working through a lot of that subdivision activity capacity, whether it's by design, the phasing plan, or by just a delay in demand. Infill and redevelopment is something that we glossed over as we were talking about that 2006 extent of urban development. A lot of the capacity that we have for job and population growth comes out of areas that don't look like they're new or greenfield development areas. Brownfield's probably a term you're familiar with, related to cleanup and remediation and reuse of properties, but grayfield is a similar term, but has more to do with the lifespan of a given building. Our buildings are really seen as depreciable assets, and they have some sort of lifespan. And the chart that's on the right there just has some different building types, from retail on the left to our homes on the right, and just the varying length of the lifespan of some of these buildings. At the same time as these assets are depreciating, the land under them is appreciating, and so at some point, they'll need some sort of significant reinvestment, either to repurpose them, or they'll be demolished to make way for new structures. So this is where we have a lot of capacity in our region as well that gets missed a lot of times when we're talking about urban footprint and extent of urban development and where we're actually growing. We may also have lots of sites that have been previously been seen as maybe too small for the scale of development that was desired in past booms, but are maybe now seen as less risky, or maybe they're better connected to opportunities, and so they're good opportunities for infill development as well. And job polycentralization is the point that I was just trying to make on the last slide, that it just makes sense for certain types of jobs to cluster or agglomerate, and these concentrations or centers or places that employers may actually continue to look to because they are proven places, well-positioned in the job market, and many are well-connected. Commercial developers may also continue to see these places as a good opportunity despite higher land costs than sort of their random greenfield alternative because there is a proven market in these places, and there are existing infrastructure improvements that may only need some incremental investments in order to unlock new capacity.
Yes. Do you have any themes for where these polycentralization locations occur? I just had to say that word.
Well, thanks. Any themes for?
For where they happen to be. There happen to be a number of centers. Do they share any common attributes or themes that you can identify?
They're all over the place in terms of, I think there's maybe some themes within them, but I think some of it's just history of where there's capacity at any given time.
So it's not like frat houses or something like that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, got it.
So I think before, this is really the last slide we have before moving into more of the guidance and discussion section, but I wanted to make sure to answer if there were any questions or reactions to this material as well.
Any comments or questions at this point?
Any comments or questions at this point?
Okay, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Brad, you're back?
Yep.
So, now we want to hear from you. We've got one.
Sorry, I have to move back.
Ms. Canish.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I was moving backwards. Can you just clarify, there was a slide where you said we thought we predicted we'd grow nine miles a year, it was actually 2.9. Is that my reading, that rate? The slide was a little harder to read than what you said, and I just wanted to clarify.
Sure, I'll take a crack, and Annie can kick me if I've done it wrong. So, you know, really, what Metrovision 2035 did is it set a future urban growth boundary total of 980 square miles, right? And growth from 2006 forward, we anticipated we would grow, we would be growing nine square miles per year between 2006 and 2035 to hit that number. And our analysis has showed over the last decade, we've been going at about basically a third of that rate. Yep.
Other comments or questions? All right, get ready to play with your clickers.
Yeah, so I will, we are using clickers, so if you do not have a clicker in front of you, please raise your hand, and Derek will scurry to bring one to you. Otherwise, I think we're probably good. So, we really want to hear from you very much. The one thing I will obviously make it very clear, this is not a binding vote. We don't vote at work sessions, but this is important to give us a little bit of guidance to help us kind of, again, understand where we might, you know, work with stakeholders or maybe bring something back to you that really hits the mark in terms of what you tell us tonight and what you told us previously in March. The one thing I want to absolutely make very clear is that this is guidance in addition to what's in Metrovision, right? Metrovision makes it very clear, based on the conversation that this body had for many, many years, about what the expectations are of how we will collectively think about growth management in this region. We are simply trying to use the conversation in March and the conversation today to round out that a little bit so that we have a really fresh feel of really kind of, again, where the board is ultimately going to land in terms of how they evaluate what this program or initiative would look, feel, and act like going forward. So, the plan very clearly makes it, clearly says to us as staff that is, along with the board and staff from around the region, that we will be focusing on making sure that new urban development happens in an orderly and compact fashion within regionally designated growth areas. So, we have that as the beginning, but that's only gets us so far, right? We're trying to learn a little bit more so that we can make sure that we deliver, again, an initiative that really does meet the needs of the board, our needs as Dr. Cog's staff, because we oftentimes rely on this work to make our work better, but also your local communities and the growth aspirations that you have at home. So, again, not a formal or binding vote. If you have not used these before, they will register your last vote. In each case, you actually are going to have the option to select more than one thing. The first slide will come up, and you actually can pick your three highest priorities. It's going to count your last three. So, if you vote, if you pick three things, you're like, oh, actually, I meant this other one, it's going to catalog the last three. So, in the first, just remember that you have multiple things that you could vote for each time. I'll explain a little bit about how we're going to handle this for folks on the phone here in a second. We also have, we're going to pause and have discussion time as well after kind of each section. You'll see that there is a question that's really kind of about the overall purpose of the initiative. There's a series of questions about, okay, what does success look like locally? What does it look like regionally? There's a series of questions related to kind of what are the roles of the board, local staff, Dr. Cog's staff, that sort of thing. Once we've had those conversations, we want to hear from you in discussion because the polling is obviously, it's imperfect in the sense of gathering, getting input from you all. We're putting words on the page that are a reasonable approximation of what we want you to get your feedback on, but we really just kind of want your gut reaction. So, we will have time for you to say your feelings on this, provide context, that sort of thing. So, don't think that we're simply living on the polling piece. We really want to do hear from you in discussion as well. So, I would quickly also instruct folks that may be on the phone, really, everyone's going to be voting, ultimately entering a number that will correspond to the number on the slide. If you're on the phone, just simply use the chat box and send us what your votes would be. If you like 1, 3, and 5, send 1, 3, and 5 via the chat box, and Tim Feld, our trustee fellow that runs the remote version of this, he will make sure and catalog those using a clicker. So, you are not out of the conversation if you're on the phone, both from a discussion standpoint as well as using the clickers. Does everyone reasonably understand where we're headed for the next few minutes? Cool.
Thank you. Just FYI, from the phone's perspective, somehow I got kicked out of the chat, so don't worry about me. I'm trying to get logged back in, but I will participate via chat.
Perfect, sounds good. So, first question, again, this is kind of looking at the sort of overall purpose of the initiative, and you can pick three. So, you can hit three numbers on this. So, what should the primary purpose of a regional growth management initiative be? And I will admit that some of these sound pretty similar, but I'm just, I'm looking for gut reaction, again, to kind of give us some guideposts to aim for. So, I'll give you a few minutes to read through the long list and to obviously make your choices.
Can we vote now?
Yes, please vote now. The polling place is open. We've already got 12 responses. Given that people are making multiple choices, my main visual cue is people looking up. So, just, thank you, Ashley, for looking all the way up. I'm going to go ahead and call the question, and we'll just go ahead and see kind of what the results are here, and of course, hope it works. So, you can see a lot of sort of answers across, and just so you know, we will save this, and it's helpful for us. A lot of folks, the two highest were number two, preserving open land, and number five, which is help focus future infrastructure investments. But obviously, we heard other perspectives as well. And just so you know, I mean, the idea of this initiative is it will hit multiple focus areas. So, this is just to get a sense as to what seems most important to this body as you sit where you sit today. So, any feedback response to that question? Tell the group why, how you voted, if you wanted to say that, why you voted that way? Any context that you want to provide to kind of round out that piece of input? The floor is yours to give us feedback.
Brad, do you want to give us, we have three choices, you gave us two and five.
Oh, well, you had three, you could have picked three, and so that 17% of people selected at least whatever the one that... Yeah.
Why wouldn't you give us the top three?
Oh, so the third one, in this case, was number six, which is help take advantage of existing infrastructure with available capacity. Those are the top three things that came from the, obviously, the first vote. So, thank you, Commissioner.
Brad, if you're looking for some comments, it's interesting that one of the, and it was the lowest response, was number three, which seems to say this is how you grow. And I thought my reaction to some of that is we've shied away from telling folks anything other than your local option and how you actually hit that form. So, that would be the connotation, at least that I took of that, and it seemed to have a low response, or lowest response, given that.
Other comments? Ms. Jones.
This is a lot less scientific. I didn't vote for three because it's in the definition of what it is, and therefore felt redundant, and to the degree that we were fleshing out what that meant, it seemed redundant to make it one of the primary purposes. So, it was, it was a different interpretation, and that's why I didn't put it up there because I thought it was implied.
I will add, those are exactly the type of comments we're looking for when we pause, just again, so we can hear a little feedback and talk, context from you all. That's very helpful, so. I think we had John over here.
Mr. John.
Thank you, Mr. Herb Atchison. My selections were kind of along the lines with Director Sernanik. You know, to me, I selected the ones that were more supportive in nature. You know, I don't want to be telling somebody else how to grow and where to grow. I want Dr. Cog to be more of a record keeper of growth and not a judge to say you can or you can't do something because I think we each have different priorities and we're going to grow differently. So, for me, it's more of a supportive type of selection.
Other comments, more feedback? Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the next one.
So, the polling is open, but I'll go ahead and read everything to you, not all one through seven, but so, these are two slides that are really kind of paired together. So, what would this initiative help do regionally, sort of putting your regional hat on, but then we will have a sort of follow-up slide that kind of maybe what's the benefit locally that should be accrued from thinking collectively about growth management in the region, so. In this case, you can pick two versus three. I'm feeling like people are done, so I'm going to go ahead and share the results. So, you can see, obviously, we have folks answer or select each of them, but really, by far, at least in this instance, number six is really what people gravitated towards, which is maximize the benefits of growth and minimize potential negative effects. You also see the second, the second most popular choice was number four, which is subregional collaboration and coordination, right? Again, sort of understanding both at the regional level, but also maybe subregional that maybe feels a little bit more closer to home, really kind of where people are growing, how they plan to grow, that sort of thing. So, that's really kind of the regional values in terms of what we would hope this thing would try and accomplish. I'm happy to just, if it's easier to chat about this one independently, we can do that right now, and then maybe have a separate chat after the sort of more local one. Aaron, look like you might have something, so.
Yeah, well, less on the specifics of this item, but just that, you know, clearly, number six came out ahead. The others are a little clustered in the middle. I hope you guys don't take too much from differences of a voter, too, and give that a big, important ranking, because I don't think it means too much when they're kind of clustered together. I'll just throw that out there as feedback.
I picked number six, but I think it's a bit, what's I trying to say? It's kind of what we're doing is exactly what number six is, I mean, is, I'm trying to think what I'm trying to say.
Can you turn your mic on so it can hear it?
Sorry, maybe I'm just not close enough.
There you go.
Number six seems like common sense. I think that's why I was picked.
Other comments or feedback on this one? All right, Brad.
Okay. So, this is kind of the local side of the equation. Again, the idea, this is a shared initiative, both locally and regionally, so there needs to be conversations and benefits that come at the local level for engaging in this conversation. So, here are some examples of things that maybe you would like to see emphasized in And just, Joe, just so you know, we saw yours. You are now officially in the polling as well. Don't know if you want the group to know that, but that is happening.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, everybody done?
I think we're in good shape. Let's go ahead and see what the results say. So, definitely a lean towards numbers six and seven. So, again, locally, the hope is that this program will prepare our local communities for longer-term growth, including new urban development, and then sort of also understanding the potential impacts of growth within your local community. Any thoughts for the group?
Robin, go ahead.
This might be evident since there were so few votes for them, but I found the word communicate just confusing in this context, right? I mean, you communicate data to the initiative to map it or to define it, but the idea that the initiative itself is communicating something, I mean, it's, I don't know, I just found that particular word communicate to be confusing to me. So, that's partially why I didn't vote for any of those.
Any other comments? Mr. Beacom.
When I read through this, it appeared that the first four were just fine-tuning things, and I think they should actually have been one item, because that's really what we're trying to do, but...
That's, I mean, all this is helpful. I mean, just, I mean, I, trust me, I knew as we put these together, these were not perfect. I'm hoping it just sort of sparks conversation. So, I'll just give you an idea from staff's perspective where those four communicate ones came from. The way that the initiative is set up right now, you largely are just sort of sharing with Dr. Cog your local growth aspirations, and there really isn't much sharing that happens outside of that, right? And I don't know, maybe that's good. Maybe that's what we're trying to do, but is really, you know, the one that did kind of resonate here, despite kind of maybe the confusion around the word communicate, is this idea of communicating more directly with your neighboring jurisdictions about your growth aspirations. Our current initiative doesn't really do that in a real way, or certainly, it's muted in terms of what we view as success of that initiative. So, this is helpful to hear conversation on this. David's got a follow-up, I think.
David, go ahead.
I accept that, and I think it's a good explanation, but what I seem, find is a shortfall right now is that we don't communicate with our neighbors and even the developers and stuff. We kind of play everything real close to the chest, and so I think the important thing to take away from this is that broadening the communication is more important than who we do it to.
Okay, that's helpful.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, John?
Thanks, Herb. No, I mean, Director Beacom, I kind of grow on that. Once Dr. Cog has all of our information, my hope was that they would take it, knit it together, look at it, and help each individual municipality understand the potential growth impacts, and then if there are any issues, to help bring us together and say, hey, you know, your neighbor is not consistent with you, and be almost advisors to the region once they have the information, once they see something that may have fallen through the cracks if one municipality is not talking to another. So, to me, my hope is that they can sort of be an advisor to the region once they have the information and communicate to individual municipalities as well as the region as a whole.
Okay, Mr. Beacom, go ahead.
You restate what I'd like to see for the conclusion. Just right now, I see that we don't talk to our neighbors and everybody, and not everybody reads everything that comes out of Dr. Cog, so they don't know a clue of what's going on, even though it's very public. And that's why associating and maybe city councils talking to each other with neighbors and commissioners talking to each other, that feeling that we're in the same boat and we should talk to each other and that we're not enemies of each other. We may compete for things, but we're not enemies. I think that's a very important function that we're trying to accomplish.
I'm going to go ahead and go to the next set. These words were really hard to come up with, so please, let's go ahead and vote sort of what your gut reaction is, but let, we can have a conversation. This is really focusing on the three main actors in this conversation, Dr. Cog's staff, the Dr. Cog board, and your local staff. So, we're just sort of asking about what these would look like. So, what are the top two words you would use to describe Dr. Cog's staff's role with the potential regional growth initiative? Again, you get to pick two. Again, you get to pick 2. Okay, we'll go ahead and check out the results here. So just so that, if you can't read, well, you probably can't read the small type there, but that 3rd choice facilitator was that one that scored 33%, so, you know, by far, kind of the number 1 answer. And then the second 2 choices were analyst and modeler. I know these words were imperfect, so if anybody just wants to kind of give your feedback as to what staff's role at Dr. Cog should look and feel like with this sort of initiative, now is a great chance to hear a little bit of context from you.
Mr. Rakowski.
Tell me what your rationalization was to differentiate between librarian and accountant.
Librarian and accountant. Do you have thoughts on that? I'm trying to recall.
Has to do with the Dewey.
I'm passing the buck, watch it out. Handy, how do we come up with this?
Accountant's a term that we've used in reference to the past program, doing a lot of tallying and adding and summing. And librarian is more of, I think, in our minds, was collecting up local plans and being a resource or repository of some of that information that people can check out.
Thank you. Ms. Jones.
I was just going to say that modeler and analyst, I think, are sort of roles that Dr. Cog uniquely plays in terms of the deep staff expertise on looking at and modeling what are the different scenarios associated with growing at different rates and in different footprints and analyzing. I sort of, both of those things are related, and I think that's something that Dr. Cog does that no one else does in the region, which is why I actually voted for modeler, but analyst, I think, falls in the same category.
I mean, now that you said that, that's helpful for me to hear, it feels very much like the group was saying facilitate a conversation that's maybe more qualitative in nature about where and how the region is going to grow, but then also understand the impacts, bring your technical tools to the table to help both the region and individual communities understand what that, what impact that growth has, that sort of how that's landing on me. So I see some head nods, so that's good.
Ms. Kanish, I got you, Laura.
Yeah, I'm really glad that Elise brought up her interpretation of analyst, because I didn't choose it because I thought of it as more mathematical, kind of, and I guess for me, I was looking for the word like advisor, right? Which is where you share with us that expertise and actual recommendations, like what's the best practice on this, what are the implications, what are the risks, so that deeper level. So with that framing, analyst feels really good to me. I just, I was looking for a word like advisor or something, which, you know, we make the decision, but I appreciate it when the staff says, here's the implications.
Okay, Ms. Crispin. I got you, Rita.
Well, I think you should have added cat herder.
That's always, that's a given, but.
From what I've observed, and I don't know how it fits in here, but the staff does a tremendous amount of the heavy lifting to make sure that the rest of us can make those decisions appropriately under federal and whatever rules, other rules we're bound by, and has made that a more efficient system. And I don't know how you define that, but I don't see it in there.
Okay, Ms. Dozel.
I like the words that involve more of a consultative role, you know, where you take the intelligence that's been gathered by the staff and actually help craft the solution. So anytime you say analyst, which is more, and involves actually taking the number of the data and analyzing it and coming up with a conclusion of some kind, and then facilitator, to me, is 1 step below what I'd like to see, and I like consultant, that's what I chose, because I would like that information that's been crafted and put together and analyzed by Dr. Cog then to be part of, and the staff being part of, the decision of how to use that information. So anytime you get that 1 level up of expertise and including that expertise in the decision-making process is better, and facilitator is good, but I like to have the consultant, which they bring their expertise to the party, not just to facilitate what everybody else is talking about.
Other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dyack.
Briefly. No, I'm in agreement. To me, I think, you know, I see meter reader, I know no one picked it, but, you know, at times, it seems like we have an awful lot of data and we have an awful lot of expertise. And to me, if the question is asked, how can I help the region get better all the time from staff, I think that'll lead you down a path to help everybody in this region, and I would like to see that and not just have staff feel like they're just taking in information, because I think once you get it, you can really help us out.
Okay, last call, comments? All right, moving on.
All right, well, that one was about us, this one's about you. So these words probably will be even harder to sort of justify if these were the perfect words, but this is, tell us the top 2 words, again, you've got 2 choices that you would use to describe the board's role in, again, sort of a collective and shared growth management initiative.
Okay, are everybody okay?
All right, let's see what you had to say. So the number 1 answer was number 4, sort of a representative, and then approver on the very right-hand side. Given this was about you, I would love to hear your perspective about a word that maybe would have worked better, maybe why you selected the one that you did, anything that, again, helps us sort of round this out a little bit.
Comments?
Just from my perspective, I think number 4 being the representative, I think that's what we are doing. We're representing our various communities, counties, whatever, and that's part, I think that's one reason it came out as high as it did, because I think that's what we're down here for. I didn't pick approver. I did put, I think mine was balancer, trying to find something that says, you know, if we have a disagreement, we work here to trying to find equitable balance of trying to come to some level of agreement. So I don't know the approvers there, because whatever we do doesn't necessarily get followed by the local group anyway.
Ron.
Director Atchison, I totally agree with your first comment on number 4. I have a lot of trouble with approval other than internally. To go beyond is, beyond, in my view, the charter we have is Dr. Cog.
Other comments on this, Ms. Jones.
I guess I'm worried in this question that the words screwed us up. I think it would appear, just looking at that, that people answered, what is the role of a Dr. Cog board member, period? We represent our jurisdictions and we approve policy. So I think the fact that people voted for approver is because we're going to have to approve whatever regional growth initiative we do. So I don't know if that's what you were looking at, looking for in this, in terms of what is our role with regional growth? It's probably a different question than what is the role of a Dr. Cog board member more largely. So I'm not sure this question really answered what you were looking for.
And the one, that's an interesting, I mean, again, anyone who's worked on surveys understands how hard it is to nail a question. Probably what I should have made very clear is this is after the initiative exists, right? This is once you have something and you are interacting within that initiative, however frequently the board either makes a decision or gives guidance to staff, what does that role look like versus sort of the moments leading up to the point where we have an initiative that you would approve or give staff guidance that yes, this is the direction you want to go? So really, it's once this thing is off the ground, what does your role feel like?
So let me ask the group this. If you understand what Brad just said, would that change your votes for many of you on, let's say, your 2nd choice? Can we rerun that?
Yeah, we can repoll.
All right, I'm going to let Brad clear that one. And Ashley, with that definition, that clarification, would you like to go back and revote?
I've got it, I think. It's open. Go for it. And you can still pick 2 choices. Hopefully, this won't throw us completely a curveball, but if it does, that's fine. I'm glad that you have a better understanding of what we're trying to get at here. My guess is this one probably went quicker than the last one, so I'll go ahead and see where we ended up. So just, it shifted more towards this idea of prioritizer as sort of the descriptor, so that in hearing what you heard from us in the discussion, you know, you shifted a little bit more in that direction. We'll understand that they both probably, I would, you know, again, these aren't binding, but I think there was something instructive in both versions of the polls, so we'll definitely take that into consideration.
Okay, is everybody okay with the results on this one? Okay, Brad.
So now we're going to go to 2 words that you would use to describe kind of the role of your staff. I mean, obviously, for us, we want this to be the lightest but most impactful lift at both the regional and the local level. So what are some words that maybe come to mind in terms of descriptors that local staff's role would be within this initiative? Okay. In case you can't sort of see, the 2 most popular were reporter, so that number 3, and then planner, which is the one all the way to the left, but also significant interest in sort of this term updater, as well as collaborator and user.
Mr. Rakowski.
I was looking for advisor and didn't find it.
Okay.
Okay, other comments? Everybody okay with this one? All right, Brad.
Well, that's really it. I just mostly want to mention where we anticipate this going next. We really would like to take, again, the feedback that we've heard in various discussions with this group over the past few months, particularly in March and this month, and we anticipate bringing a group of your technical experts and people that have a lot of institutional knowledge with the current program to sort of figure out how do we hit the mark with, obviously, the Board of Directors to make sure that we have an initiative that really meets your needs. So I think we will probably work, again, with your staff for a few months and maybe come back when we feel like we have something to share and just hopefully we've hit the right mark. And we will not be walking into the door, in the door with a, you know, fully fleshed-out proposal. It's just, we will obviously check in when we feel like we have something that we feel like we need to get guidance from this group on. So we certainly appreciate you bearing with us and taking a wild swing at the words that we put up in front of you that were surely imperfect, so we appreciate that.
Just have a quick question. Is this going to be done again at the next meeting? At the next meeting? At the May 17th meeting?
Oh, at the board? No, with full board, no. The expectation is that, obviously, the full board is invited here, and we have enough to go on, and we'll use this, again, to get us to the next step to bring back to the work session. So, but thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item number 6, Mr. Rex, would you lead us in?
Thank you, sir, very much. Before Steve takes over the mic here and presents his topic, I want to just talk to you about what this is and where we're headed. We're really beginning to put the meat on the bones for the next TIP call for projects, which is the 2020 to 2023 TIP. You know, you've seen some presentations, some informations, concepts related to where we're headed, and we've got direction from you all to begin to, you know, flush out those details in our TIP policy document. The 2 topics you're going to hear, I should first mention this sheet that's at your table. This is kind of our schedule, and the Xs and Os that are in here shows when we anticipate taking certain topics to you all. It is extremely ambitious.
So a kind of schedule is what?
Well, it's fluid. But I will say, we're kind of on schedule right now, but I expect that, you know, if we could, if we can follow this schedule to the conclusion, it will be miraculous. But we've already, you know, our last TIP policy workgroup meeting was over 3 hours.
I just heard the heavens open up.
Yeah, no doubt. So I wanted to draw your attention to this and, you know, kind of use this as the guide as we go forth. So the 2 topics that we really have for you today are the TIP focus areas, and just as a background on that, the TIP policy workgroup are formerly known as the TIP Review Work Group. They really felt that, you know, we wanted some direction from the board for the next TIP call, what is it you all would like to accomplish with this pot of money that we have to increase and improve mobility in this region, to make life better? So we encourage you all to, you know, kind of select a few focus areas to kind of guide the direction of the criteria and the selection of projects. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the regional pot, the regional share, just lay out the framework. So with that, I'll turn it to Steve to begin the discussion on the TIP focus areas.
All righty, thank you. And this is Attachment C in your document, and we're switching gears a little bit here and now talking about our Transportation Improvement Program. Quick reminder, we typically do calls for projects to allocate certain pots of federal dollars that Dr. Cog administers, you know, generally every 4 years, and we're going to be doing that a year or so from now. And as was mentioned, the next 4-year period of dollars are the fiscal year 2020 through 2023 dollars, so I just want to make sure we're on that same Transportation Improvement Program page. It's, in a way, it's almost like a region-wide capital improvement program, you know, in a sense. This is where we have the real dollars, the real money, and the real projects. So as noted in the schedule there, and as Doug alluded to, where goal is to adopt the TIP by March of 2019. The key first large, very large item is the approval of the TIP policy document by the end of this year, and that's really, you know, the rules of the game, as it used to be called. We've got the TIP policy workgroup working on that. They'll be looking at things like eligibility of projects, evaluation criteria, and all of these things will come back to the board. So it's not going to be the workgroup, you know, defining the absolute. Everything will be coming back to the board. As was mentioned, one of the key things to remember also in the back of your mind as we're discussing this today and in the next few meetings is this dual selection process for this round of Call for Projects, where there would be a regional share or pot of dollars to go towards regional-type projects, that'll be discussed later, and then smaller subarea county-based shares of money to go to the geographic areas of the counties to recommend projects. So as was mentioned by Doug earlier, a key component of the framework for the new TIP that was discussed by the board in January, I believe, was the creation of focus areas for the new TIP. The policy workgroup discussed this in April, and as part of this, they had us test a basis for starting the discussion. And I'm stressing today that our discussion today is not to define focus areas, it's to talk about some possible methods of starting that discussion. And so that's really, really important. Key part of their discussion of starting, discussion of starting the discussion is using the Metrovision Plan objectives as one of the guiding, the basis for starting that talk on focus areas. There's a tiering of objectives within the Metrovision Plan that was adopted a few months ago. There's the regional scale objectives, I forget how many there are, 14, and then there's a couple of As and Bs, so I think it adds up to 16 regional. But then there are the supporting objectives that support each of those regional objectives. And then a 3rd item that we did as part of a polling process that we did for the workgroup, now they didn't use clickers, they used SurveyMonkey, so, you know, they were able to do it from their office, is composite themes of objectives. So we packaged together some of the supporting objectives, that some of them got redundant, some of them had common themes, and packaged them together. And so we did administer a survey to the workgroup. All the members, 22 members, and I think 21 voted in the poll, and there were 3 sections to it, 3 questions that we asked them. First, we said, of the regional objectives, pick your top 3. First, we said of the regional objectives, pick your top three. And we summed those up and tabulated those. Of the supporting objectives, which there are a lot more, I think there are a total of like 25 that were related to transportation, pick your top five, we had them do. And then of these objective theme packages, they picked the top three. We tabulated the results, we presented them in your document there.
Document.
And the workgroup discussed them. You know, it wasn't discussing them to define final focus areas, just to see what kind of things shook out of those results. And so what's presented in your packet is for question number one for the workgroup was define your top regional objectives. And probably not surprisingly, the ones most closely related to transportation system rose to the top pretty distinctly of, you know, improving the region's multimodal transportation system and operating, managing, and maintaining it in a safe and reliable fashion. The second question, I think it's a little smaller, maybe try to enlarge this a little, but was for the supporting objectives. And here really, you know, the top five didn't necessarily rise well above the others, but the group, when the workgroup discussed them, kind of identified, you know, these five as being, you know, some that moved to the top of improving the system performance and reliability of the transportation system, maintaining that system in good condition. That's all aspects of the transportation system, you know, its transit vehicles, its roadways, its bike paths. The third one down was improving the capacity of the multimodal roadway system. Then the last two there were bicycle and pedestrian accessibility and improving the comprehensive transit system. And I'll just go to the last one, and then we can check on observations here. And then this was the one where we packaged together the supporting objectives into themes, and the two which the workgroup noted as, you know, rising to the top were transportation system performance and multimodal enhancements. So those were the two that they noted at, you know, the rose at the top there. Couple other quick things to mention before discussion is, the workgroup realized that just as with the last survey, there's terminologies that people may have been defining differently in their head when they were taking this. And one of the key ones that came out was maintenance. You know, that's in a few of the objectives of what was really meant by that. We're not going to have like a direct answer today, and the workgroup's going to go back and look at that. But maintenance is one of those things that can mean a lot of different things. You know, if you're talking, you know, a roadway, it can be everything from your day-to-day snow plowing and pothole filling, all the way up to, you know, a full reconstruction of tearing out the entire road, all the subsurface and rebuilding the whole thing. So there's a lot of different perspectives on maintenance, so we need to work with the workgroup and, you know, nail that definition down a little better. Another observation that they had was that to their, you know, in their perception while answering this, the poll, was that many of them perceived that some topics were really embedded, you know, almost in everything, that, you know, safety is something that's going to be embedded in any perspective, in any objective for the most part, that that's critical. And environmental aspects, whether it's the physical environment or air or, you know, environmental justice type thing. So that was, that's something that we'll have to discuss a little bit more. And with this, as noted in the memo, we really present a couple of questions to you, you know, to get your initial thoughts here. You know, first of all, do you think this polling process that we did for this method to help guide the start of the discussion, the focus areas, what do you think of it, the process? And would you like the board to complete the poll? You know, we could do a SurveyMonkey for the board members, you know, I don't know the specific dates, but just what do you think of the process of this as maybe being something to provide a little bit of base information? Maybe just start with that one.
All right, Mr. Roth.
Any thoughts in the process?
Yes and yes.
Okay.
Mr. Sinanik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for warning everyone, Director Roth. One is, as we've had quite a bit of a discussion before, some of the objectives within Metrovision are not transportation-related per se, yet it seemed among the workgroup that the items that did bubble to the top, at least my observation is, that they're transportation-related. So I think they actually recognized some of that. The one piece that I would like to see is, we've talked about system-wide principles. We've had a consultant that's talked about those and saying that things can work well when you actually have those system-wide principles. I'm wondering, are there items that we have not included in Metrovision that maybe other regions have included as system-wide principles that we should maybe take to kind of flavor this up a little bit and maybe focus some of those? Because they may have gone through a cycle of practical application of those, and I think that would be valuable to at least see or have researched.
Okay. No, I like that. And then we can maybe think about whether actually bringing them in here or just discussing them, you know, at the applicable time. We'll think about that. We'll see what we discover in that. That's a good thought.
Mr. Brockett.
I had a question for you. How would you use this as a kickoff? Like, so, you know, there's some small differences in the number of votes that got received. What is it that you're taking from that as, if you're using this as a kickoff?
I'll almost put it back to, you know, first to the workgroup who had their discussion, then to the board. You know, it's really a piece of information to see what things you observe in it. Different people interpret things in different ways. I don't know that we would be wanting to, you know, staff, unless you tell us to, you know, draw specific conclusions, but it really is a basis for just kicking off the discussion. I mean, yeah, I'm not sure, you know, how to specifically...
Well, I guess then to follow up based on your response there, I would say, like, I think that, like, the grouping of the items into themes is useful, is a way to think about things going forward. But I'd hate to see our eventual TIP, you know, distributing hundreds of millions of dollars based on, you know, small differences in a poll taken in from a small group of people right here. So I would just caution you to not take too much from those rankings, but there is some good material in there.
Yeah. That's actually a good, we can obviously come back to that first question, but that's a kind of a lead-in, like, to that second question there is, is one thing that we'll have to discuss further is, there's a lot of different ways of incorporating when you ultimately define focus areas. And that is one of the key, I think it's still going to be one of the key discussion items at the board workshop in August, is the focus areas. And that after they're defined, it's how are they incorporated? You know, it's probably not going to be like a 100% split eligibility thing of, okay, only this is eligible and this isn't. We can bring it into criteria, into the selection. But there's different ways of bringing it in, bringing the focus areas into the overall TIP policy, and that's what you'll help us with later in the year. And there's a lot of different places and methods for bringing the focus areas in.
Okay, Ms. Kneech.
Thank you.
I got your lead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I like the idea of, you know, kicking off with Metrovision-type things. I think that's a really healthy starting point, so thumbs up on that. I think my worry about the particular things that have been chosen, however, is that some of them are so broad as to not be useful, right? So, you know, improve and expand the region's multimodal transportation systems is so broad as to tell me virtually nothing about what I'm focusing on. And so I use the comparison, so one, I think if we are using Metrovision stuff, we have to use the lower-level, more specific things, because these big level buckets are just too broad. And what I meant with transit and what someone else meant is roads, and they both fit, and they're not, you know. So an example of where I'm not sure how to tease this out, so I think yes, but lower level. And then I think there probably are some things that don't flow as easily from the Metrovision pieces on the surface, but you can tie back. So I use, for example, we're debating our geo-bond in Denver. And so there's a debate between maintaining existing and big catalytic, right? Now, Metrovision has those words buried somewhere, but they're so discreet that I do think you probably want to pull on some other types of themes that maybe aren't as neatly coming from. So you might want to pull on the apples of Metrovision and maybe on some oranges. And I guess, you know, I think the other question becomes a little, so I'll pause. So that's second recommendation. This third one just gets into a little bit of the overarching assumption. So for example, one of the themes we've debated at this table in the past is the idea that Metrovision should leverage the VASRAC investment, right? That's a focus area. Now, we've done that in part through this off-the-top set-aside, so then it kind of became a less important focus area for the other decision-making processes we went through. So I think when you, this gets a little bit into your second question of how do you use this focus area thing? Because, so I think that's an important focus area. It might be more applicable to a set-aside thing, or it might be more applicable to, you know, so I think that, I don't know what you do with that dilemma, but I think it's relevant to, you know, when folks are thinking about this kind of polling. I think it's important that you maybe talk to us before it comes out in email. So think mostly about the set-asides, you know, or maybe you even ask the question separately, thinking most about set-asides, thinking most about typical, you know, local project applications, thinking most about the regional sub-allocation, maybe, because it'd be interesting to see if themes differ in those settings. I don't know. So I just do think, though, that there's a little bit of a dilemma of when, you know, chicken/egg there. So that's a lot, but I think right direction, maybe some shorter, more focused options, though, that aren't so broad.
So you may remember that I was the most grouchy one when we passed this last time. So I'm not quite sure how much is sane, what's helpful. I'll start out just with a direct question. Is it helpful to do these surveys in order to spur conversations? I definitely think the surveys can be helpful. In addition to, sometimes it's only a few points difference, I think if you have repetitive stuff, so you have three things that are similar, and then the fourth thing gets a lot of votes, like, it's confusing as to which ones were meaningful. The other thing is that in terms of conversation, it's, if there's something we're really trying to decide or figure out, there's more impetus to have a conversation, and then it's, sometimes it's hard to know when we're talking, to hear ourselves talk, saying opinions that maybe everybody sort of heard before, and when it's important for us to say those things. So I'm not sure to what extent these sort of interim-step surveys really get the conversation that, I don't know if you want or not, that just, I mean, because clearly there's conversations we could have about urban growth boundaries here, but at some level, we want to figure out how to do it so that it's only biting off a little part, but then how do you... So I do think it's an important tool, but I think it's a part of everything else. In terms of the... So I don't know that we, exactly what our last vote was. I remember we were moving forward on the possibility of using this other system. I don't remember it being that we necessarily will use this other system. And the way I'm hearing it is, we're coming up with a criteria that will apply to all the counties. It looks like counties were saying no. There would be a different criteria in every county?
Well, I guess my concern is that we don't want to jump into criteria too quickly on this focus area thing, and that the focus area, the how they're used is yet to be defined. And I know there's been people at the workgroup, too, who have brought up criteria, criteria. Doug, correct me if I'm wrong.
So I guess all I...
If you don't want to jump into that too quick.
All I'd be adding, so the way I thought about it shifted a little bit. I used to think that, okay, this is like the Tier Two, so these local allocations are like what used to be Tier Two. But that's not really true. The local allocations are like what used to be Tier One and Tier Two, and the regional allocation is like the set-aside, the off-the-top. So we're really looking at shifting all of our non-set-aside to this new system. And so to the extent that we're really weakening the criteria, and it didn't used to be just like three or four things, it was like, I mean, we spent months debating very in-depth criteria. We're moving away from a regional vision and towards sort of spreading the peanut butter, which is important to spread the peanut butter with less of a... So anyway, I guess my vote would be keep it, I mean, more specific.
Okay, Ms. Jones.
So I think focus areas are important in guiding the TIP. That's where the, this iteration of the board will leave its stamp on the TIP and will hopefully be based on the current circumstances in terms of what's regionally important. So I think it is, I want to highlight that, I think focus areas are critical to figure out, and I think it does make sense to start with Metrovision. We put a lot of time into putting that together, so that makes sense. I agree with Director Brockett's comments about, you know, polling is a good place to start the conversation. Let's not overemphasize the results, but use it as a catalyst for a robust conversation. And I think I agree with Director Kneech about, you know, when we're polling on something where the terms are being interpreted differently by different people, we don't get a meaningful result. So the questions are important, like the point you brought up about maintenance, is that road reconstruction? Is that snow plowing? And that's a fundamentally different question you'd be asking. So I think probably we need to be very careful about defining terms, and maybe it's to Director Kneech's point, be very specific in our questions, go to that more specific level as a place to really ferret out what we want to emphasize.
Okay, I got Mr. Partridge, Mr. Rex, and Mr. Teeter in that order. Mr. Partridge?
I think what do we look at? I think all pretty much agree, regionalism is a key thing for us all. I mean, why not? Who just stays in their own territory? I think 95% of the room did not stay in their territory right now. We're in Denver. So, but with that, you know, the high tide rises all ship. But if your ship is not able to get out of the dock, you don't have a chance to rise. And where I'm going with that was that subregional approach allows every ship to rise because it does give, it creates that equity formula. So with that, Steve, I think in a way, I really look at, there's almost two sets of questions. Would your, you would have a question in regard on what you would think would be a regional pot, and then a set of questions for each director to think about in their region, their own subregion. So it's almost really kind of two sets of questions to really dive down, be respective of everybody's needs and desires, but really bring it back, we all care about regionalism.
Mr. Rex.
Thank you, sir, very much. And I do appreciate the comments we've had thus far, and, you know, to the last comments from the Commissioner, I think that kind of, it's kind of on the same road that Robin suggested, you know, about maybe, maybe the focus areas are, you know, we have the three categories. We have the set-asides, regional, and subregional. Maybe there's focus areas for each of those. I mean, maybe we get that specific. But I don't want us to get too bogged down by the process. I think it's really, in my mind, anyway, maybe I'm simple, but I think it's a simple question that, what is it we would like to do to increase mobility in this region? Are there certain areas we should focus our investment to be able to do that? And maybe there's not. Maybe we, you know, it's a matter of just opening it up to any and all projects that are able to do that, and maybe that's sufficient. But at least there's a conscious discussion, which, quite frankly, I don't believe happened the last TIP go-around. We were so concentrated and so, just so obsessed with the criteria to make sure, you know, it is what it'd end up being. it is what it, what it ended up being, that we forgot to ask the question, what it is we were trying to do. And I think it, in my mind, the question is that simple. I know the answer is never as simple as that, but, you know, and I think, and Steve mentioned this, that, you know, us as staff, we're very conscious, particularly about this focus area, more than any other part of this, of this TIP development thus far, that we don't, we don't coax you down a certain direction. We really want you all to own this, own this part, so that we can begin then to build off of those focus areas of where you want to take this in developing out the criteria. And that's why, Stephen mentioned, we're not really ready to have a discussion about that specific criteria yet until such time that we feel, you know, that you guys feel comfortable with areas you would like to really develop out. So I'll leave it at that.
So he's dealing with 50 elected officials and he uses the word "simple." Director Teeter.
Yes, I know we talked earlier on about multi-jurisdictions. And I think that needs to be on that list right there at the top to where, if we're going to be able to put a project on the board that will help three or four different regions or groups, that's the one that I think, at least for our area, I think that'll work for our area very well.
Okay, in the queue, I have Dyak, Walton, Shakti, and Shaw. Director Dyak.
Right. Thank you, Chair. So to me, focus areas, you know, I think, I think the regional discussion starts with the set aside. I mean, I think we can all look at I-25, I-70, and the light rail as transformative, I guess, as the TIP committee calls them, projects. So I mean, to me, I think the discussion starts with that and what the attributes are. And then we can move forward with what else. You know, what do I want to accomplish? I think it kind of goes to what Director Partridge is saying. I mean, I think if we target specifically what each municipality wants to do, and we try and put that, overlay that on the region, it's imperfect. I believe every municipality is different. They have different views on what's important. And to me, I want to improve each municipality, increase local controls, so they can identify what their issues are and fix them at their sub-regional level. And to me, it'll be interesting to see what transpires if that does happen, because that'll be a true representation of what, what we need to in fact do.
Director Walton.
I'm new to this process, so forgive me if this is already built in, but something that keeps occurring to me is that different areas are in different life cycles of development. And so as I look at some of those polling questions, it starts to feel like icing on the cake and the cherry, but I want to make sure the cake's baked, so the basics, and make sure that's built in, and maybe that's in other areas.
Director Shakti.
Can I, can I ask what the cake is?
Pure cake.
Well, Robin brought sprinkles to one board meeting about
I love sprinkles, or are they Jimmy's? I, just a basic intersection for traffic flow and is, you know, I can think of one particular intersection in Lafayette that is important to me.
I just want to add that the process that is being proposed to add in terms of the regional, so the off the top, I think that's really great that we're looking at that. In terms of, should we give money to every city and they do what they want to do as a city, or should we have some voice as a region on what makes sense? Some of that is making sure, I mean, some of it comes down to values, but some of it also comes down to bang for the buck. Like, is the money being spent on the best projects for the region? I think my position on that is clear, and I guess I would say that I panic every time we talk about this, in that I'm afraid that we'll come up with three meaningless general statements that every county has to follow, kind of thing. And what's valuable about that is it shows that I care what happens here, I'm invested in this process, and so I'm sorry if all we need is more time to work through all these issues. The other thing I would add is that what I'm hearing from my staff, and my staff was pretty excited about this approach, is more concerned that as they get, go down the process of, well, how is the allocation really happening at the county, and what criteria are used there, and blah, 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 it starts to seem more complicated, and they're worried about, is it going to be worth the extra work to set up this new system? So I think that that's a question we need to keep on the table as we look at it.
I have Director Shaw and then Director Stolzmann. Director Shaw.
Thanks. It's kind of funny, but I haven't been through this process before either, and I'm hearing some really good comments. It seems to me that it could be fairly simple, to Mr. Rex's point, and if we develop focus areas for each of the major buckets of money, we might be able to find criteria that, that also fall under those focus areas, so that perhaps a lot of the work has already been done by the board before, letting us, you know, perhaps tweak as opposed to redo. I like very much to have broad enough criteria that, at least in terms of the focus points or themes, so that areas, we know we're, we all have different needs across our cities and towns. So if we get too specific, you know, we won't be able to accommodate a town or a city that's in a different area or level of development, who might be, or a part of town that's focused on freight trains as opposed to safety, as opposed to other types of transportation like, you know, bicycling. So it, I just want to make sure that in our focus areas, we're fairly broad, but in the criteria, we try and kind of slot in the criteria that's already been developed and see how that works.
So I have Stolzmann and Serenick, but before that, I just want to make one quick comment. For the folks that are talking about they haven't been through this process before, I just want everybody to keep in mind that since this happens as infrequently as it does, and we have the turnover that we do on this board, there's probably half of this board that has not been through this process before, maybe even more than that. Some years, this board, because of term limits and election cycles and everything else, there's some years that we have as much as 30% turnover in a year. So first of all, I would just encourage you not to feel discouraged that you haven't been through the process and that you feel like you might be behind the eight ball with the information curve, because that's not necessarily the case. And then secondly, I just wanted to also encourage that, I think part of the reason that staff wants to look at this with fresh eyes is because there are fresh eyes on the board. So just keep that in mind, that don't feel like the Lone Ranger, that you're the only one that is looking at this and going through this for the first time. Director Stolzmann.
Thank you very much. So Director Dyak mentioned the set aside piece, and part of my struggle with understanding what I think we should focus on with the focus areas is I don't have a really good feel for the set aside projects. And I don't have a good feel for the definition of a transformative project yet, to understand what would be funded. So Director Dyak kind of talked about, you just knew what those were, like I-70 and light rail. But that raises questions for me, like, does that mean the unfunded portion of fast tracks is up in that pot? Does that mean other big projects that aren't totally funded are going to be submitted for that? So I don't totally understand what those are, and those projects could consume all of the funding. So I don't, and I heard a lot of interest in having more money go to the local projects. So on one hand, I think it's really good and important that we set aside the things for the transformative projects, but I just need more information to understand what that means, to be able to be comfortable with the process, I guess.
And I'm going to let Director Dyak address that.
Yeah, and so to me, I want to rely on the TIP committee, the technical people, to kind of take a look at that and provide, from a historical perspective, what those projects were. I mean, to me, what I've seen are projects such as I-25. I don't know how, but I mean, to me, certain attributes that we funded, certain projects in certain ways in the past, I think if you, if you create a list of what we've done in the past and what attributes we've had or that are common with each of those, I think that's a good starting point. So to me, that's what I'm looking at. I think that, to me, those set asides are the, are the projects which are big, and the only couple I've seen were the I-70 and the light rail. So to me, I like the technical people to go and take a look at, historically speaking, what projects have we done? What are the attributes or commonalities between each of those? As well as, you know, from a funding standpoint, what I've heard from staff is, you know, typically they were sort of last dollar, they were already funded, but last dollar. So things like that, I think, are a good starting point with us to have a discussion or to have the technical people come to us and say, here's what we know, and oh, by the way, we're recommending something more or something different, so.
Director Serenick.
Yes, being someone who's now going through this the third time, even though it hasn't been, it hasn't been all that frequent, I will be woefully disappointed and think we will do a disservice to the region if all we do is tweak. That's what we did the first time I went through. Last time, at best, we tweaked it. Doug will remember him telling us, telling me personally, that we couldn't do better because we were squeezed on time. And so if all we do is tweak it, it will be wrong. There are ways that we can go at this in a more enlightened fashion. I use the term system principles, system-wide principles, for a reason. Our next agenda item is actually talking about the relative pools between regional and sub-regional. I'll have some comments on that. But to get to the point where we have that recognizing, we also need to be in a position where we'll break this down into actually measurable criteria. But to start with the conversation, so that we're not, pardon the illusion here, tangled in our underwear by thinking about our specific project, but we're actually thinking about what's going to be important for the region. And to talk at that level and to have that discussion, look for the work group on it. But in the end, we're the ones that need to put our money where our mouth is, so to speak, or, and I very much am looking forward to not doing something that's a mere tweak of what we've done before.
I have Stolzmann and Pfeifer. Director Stolzmann.
Thank you. Just the rest of my comment, and I apologize for making two rounds of comments. I just had a few other things. So the, I think it's important that the focus areas, and I think Director Shaw mentioned this, relate to the funding pool, so where there are specific funding sources that have a targeted thing, like our air quality funding, we need to, we need to have the focus area be about that. Director, or I'm sorry, Mr. Rex said that he wasn't really ready to jump to metrics, but I feel that having some examples of metrics will help our discussion the next time around. And I understand the line of thought that, well, so from my perspective, we need to be responsible with the taxpayers' money, absolutely. And I understand the line of thought that the local electeds will have the best sense of what their area needs and will be able to take care of the money most responsibly. But I think at the same time, we need to be held accountable to certain things, and so that's where I think the metrics will come in, so that we can demonstrate to one another that we've accomplished what we've tried to do. So I think it's important not to just submit projects and say in an amorphous way that it will have a benefit, but I think we actually need to quantify the benefit and then show once the project's completed that it did accomplish that.
Any other questions or comments? Director Pfeifer pulled his hand back. Director Jones.
I'm sorry, but I, the last two speakers just triggered this for me. I think the last TIP cycle wasn't that we were disappointed with the outcome so much as we hated the process. And we might be disappointed with the outcome, but we don't know, because as Ashley pointed out, we don't measure the outcome. We never go back and see if our projects actually increased mobility, decreased congestion. So that is, I think, one of the flaws that we pointed out. And I don't know if we can accomplish that change, but to the degree that we could, that would be my aspiration, and it wouldn't be a tweak. It would be really getting serious about measuring the outcomes and seeing that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck.
Director Pfeifer found his voice.
Well, I was just going to chime in, because I came in at the last one, right at the end. And if you all remember, I remember I sat, I sat right back there where Ashley is, and my eyeballs were spinning, and the only thing I could say was, I thought this was the Gladiator arena. If you all remember that, who was here, that's, I was so lost, because I thought that we were becoming not regionalized or collaborating or anything to that effect. And so the last three speakers, I completely agree that we don't want to tweak it, we want to completely, I want to revamp it, I want a new approach, because to me, I think we can do it better and do it more collaboratively. So, you know, I want to avoid the Gladiator thing. That's, that was just dreadful when I came in right in the middle of that, so, thanks.
Other questions or comments? Okay, this is an informational item, so other than taking down the information and the comments and the questions, I think that's all we need on that one. Thank you very much. So just a point of order real quick. Typically, we have a hard stop at this meeting at 6:00 because we have a meeting that follows this one. The meeting that follows this one was canceled for tonight. However, we, you know, we can move as quickly or as, or as not so quickly as you would like. So we will move on to Agenda Item 7, which is Attachment D. Mr. Rex.
Thank you, sir, very much. And yeah, well, I'm going to make my first revision to our schedule. I'm going to put an X in the box for a work session in June to probably, you know, to finish this discussion about the regional framework, maybe, maybe not. I think it's going to be back in June or July to this, to this group, depending on how far we get with this today. But yeah, I mean, I really do enjoy a lot of the comments we've had today, because I think it speaks to exactly the reason why there were, there were communities that felt a little disenfranchised by the last process. I know when I came in, I came in right at the beginning of the TIP process, Bob, when it was, you know, I came in November 13th, and the first meeting to talk about the TIP was November 13th. And I was like, oh my word, I'm, I had to read the criteria, three, the last criteria, criteria before the last, three times before I could even understand it. And I swore I was never going through that again. It's 13. Yeah. Well, pretty much. But so, so then, you know, we went through our TIP debrief, as you all know, and there were certain things that the board wanted to see. And one was kind of a simplification of the process, right? And I agree with, with Commissioner Jones's comments in that, you know, it wasn't so much about the outcomes, because if you do look at the map of projects that were, were part of the last TIP call, it's pretty darn good, you know? I mean, geographically, spatially, looks good, and I think there was a good mix of projects as far as project types and all that kind of good thing. But I think the process was, you know, was, was just, was brutal. So, you know, I think one, one of the things that the TIP policy work as group has been tasked with is providing a framework that, that simplifies the process, but gets us in a, gets us to a position where we're selecting the best projects. And the one that is under consideration right now is this whole dual model, right? The regional and sub-regional pots. So today, what I want to talk to you a little bit about is the regional framework. And what we've developed thus far and what the work group is currently discussing and debating is about, you know, what should that call for projects look like, right? You know, in the past, we've been pretty prescriptive about, you know, certain criteria. I mean, it, you know, points down to the 10th to the tenth of a point even, in some cases. And what this, this process that we are currently discussing is more open-ended. Now, this is just for the regional pot, not the subregional pot, but for the regional pot. And so it's more open-ended. And if, I'll turn your attention, oh, thank you, Steve, very much. I'll turn your attention to the, to the attachment of this item. That, and basically, what we've outlined thus far is certain, certain categories. And we have the purpose and project eligibility. The actual, the actual purpose is, came directly out of the TIP policy framework, the white papers that the, that the work group developed. And basically, it says that projects are limited to transformative project, air quotes. We have not defined what that means yet, and we're hoping to get maybe a little bit of direction from you all about what you think that means. That play a crucial role in the shaping and sustaining, and sustaining the future of individual cities and counties for the Dr. Cog region. And I won't, I won't get into, you know, you can read it as well as I can, and it's in your packet. But it does refer to the focus areas, but it does talk about projects that are transformative. But the important thing I'd like for you to notice in this section is the second paragraph, the one sentence there. And it makes reference to all projects and program types are eligible. However, those successful applicants will be those that have projects that can show, again, air quotes, a magnitude of benefit that is fitting of a regional project. And again, we have not defined what that means, but it speaks to several of the comments that we've had here today, that we want to be able to select projects that they can quantify, that can, that can show quantifiable benefits and a return on investment. So we can prove to the public that we're spending our money on projects, that we're going to have a net benefit to this region. So that's what I wanted to point out in there. And then the, the criteria elements, at least, you know, some of the discussions that we're having thus far, first and foremost, we are going to request that the applicant, the applicant be able to provide a problem statement. What problem is it you're trying to fix with your proposal? And if they can't do that, then they probably shouldn't even be submitting an application. And then, secondly, and I would suggest the bulk of the points or the evaluation of this project will be based on, you know, the benefits of that proposed project. How is this project you are submitting going to alleviate or help reduce that problem that you, that you've suggested? And leave it up to the applicant to be able to do that. Now, what we'd like to get some direction from you all is, you know, and we understand, we're going to have to establish some curbs on that, right? We just can't just throw it out. But they're going to have to be able to show us, in a quantifiable manner, how that project is going to solve that problem. And then, you know, the question then becomes is, how do you evaluate projects against each other, right? Which is, I think, the most difficult portion of this. And we'll be flushing that out in more details as we go forth. But, you know, we, so we talk about the benefits of the project. We talk about, you know, it has to be able to, you know, the applicant has to show us how they're able to address the TIP focus areas, the consistency with Metrovision and the long-range plan. We've talked about that in our white papers, which we believe is important. And the partnerships. And this gets back to several of the comments that we've had. It's like, you know, you know, multi-jurisdictional projects, or projects that, you know, that, you know, big transformative projects that has a regional benefit, that will have a benefit to multiple jurisdictions. Those projects, I would suggest, will be looked upon more favorably than others. And project readiness, we do believe that if someone is suggesting a project, it is a project they should be able to have constructed or fairly close to construction by the end of that TIP cycle. So those are the concepts we're discussing right now. I just, we just wanted to throw this at you to see if we're on the right path. If you, as you can tell, I mean, it is certainly a lot more open-ended than anything that we've ever had, particularly the last two TIP calls, because it forces the applicant to make a determination if their project is fitting to be a regional project. And if they, they believe it is, then obviously, ultimately, you know, you all are going to be the deciding factors on if that project is indeed regional. But I'll just leave it right there, and just get your general reaction to this. If this is, we're headed in the right direction, or you think, you know what, this is crazy.
So I don't want to spend more than about two minutes on what happened in the past, but again, for the benefit of those who were not here. Basically, one of the frustrations I think a lot of directors had in the last TIP cycle was that we had project categories, and those project categories only competed against other-like projects. So we had like bike pad, we had, we had studies, we had particular types of projects, and they only competed against projects within their same category. And the frustration was that maybe the third project in one category that didn't get funded was a better project than the fifth project in another category, and because of the mix of funding, it did get funded. So that, that I think is one of the frustrations that people had, and why staff is looking at this as more of an open-ended approach, rather than having those very strong definitions around them. Is that fair?
I think that's fantastic. That is exactly the reason why. And, you know, we've had, we were so departmentalized or compartmentalized, that we had project, we had a project in particular that couldn't, wouldn't even fit in any of the project types we had, and we didn't even know what to do with it. I mean, that, we shouldn't be in a situation in which that happens, right? I mean, if that project has the potential to improve mobility in this region, it should be considered. And so.
Okay, in the queue, I have Sernanek, Knich, Walton, and Brockett, and Jones, and Shakti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make two comments, and hopefully be quiet thereafter. So, one is the absolute importance of having a projected impact. But what I'd like to see and think we will benefit by is how that's going to be tempered to say, in the end, that there's some consistency across the various different projects with regard that, that aspect of tempering. So we have some idea of the, good sense that it's actually a pretty good projection of the impact that it's going to have. Second item is, rather than measuring individual projects, I'd like to see us take a look at the portfolio of projects for the regional allocation that's going to have the maximum impact for the region. Not one project against the other, but the portfolio of projects that's going to produce the best result for the region.
Director Knich.
Thank you. As we think about this handout, I think we're in a good starting direction. So that feedback, it maybe lends itself more to a menu of focus areas, right, rather than just one. And one of the, for example, scoring matrix could be, so let's say we had three focus areas, right? Leveraging fast-track investment, or last mile, and maintenance. You know, I mean, you could, you could imagine a situation where, you know, you have a project that hits five of five, or three of five, and that could be a more objective way of kind of saying, how many of our focus areas does a project hit? So just a way to think about how to add some objective criteria, which, which may be easier to do if you don't have one focus area.
Right.
The other thing that I think about, I think one of the things that's always challenging is, you know, the idea of reducing all projects to a super-objective score, right? And that, and I think one of the things that most of us probably do in most of our RFP processes that are, you know, that this, this system doesn't, is interviews and presentations. And in theory, it was impracticable, because you had dozens and dozens of projects. But if, if the theory is that there's a fewer number of qualifying projects, then one way to do a better job at qualitative, you know, things that can't be reduced to a score, is to actually do what most of us do in other settings, is see a project presentation and understand the project more fully. I mean, to date, we've been evaluating projects based on a score determined by staff, the jurisdiction they're in, and the name, right? I mean, we haven't had an understanding, right? So sometimes someone will tell us, well, that road project includes a bike lane, but I don't see a picture of the connection that has to the regional trail, or, you know. So I guess I'm just curious whether or not there's a way, because I feel like what's risky and scary about this is adding this qualitative piece. But there are ways we've done that in processes before. So if we look at what are some of the best practices for doing qualitative work, it doesn't mean like, oh, that's a prettier presentation than that one, right? I still want there to be all these quantitative pieces. But it, and I like this portfolio idea, that the idea is that, at the end of the day, if I'm not funding a single bike pad project, I'm probably not doing a full regional picture. You know, so if there is a, you know, so if you have, you know, a set of things, and there, and there isn't this, if there is a good applicant that meets these thresholds and has these outcomes, then, then I think about, I don't know. So, so I guess the last thing I'll say is, you know, in the benefits of the project proposal, I think that a piece of that, we want to point people to Metrovision, right? So, you know, I think that's where we have a number of metrics, right? And so if, I want to know if these metrics, you know, if you have five quantitative datas that you can show me, but three of them help with one of the goals that I've adopted, I would be helpful to know that. So I would add, pointing people in that direction. Doesn't mean it's the only kind of data they can provide, but it'd be silly not to point them in that direction. Thanks.
So in the queue, I've got Walton, Brockett, Jones, Shakti, Christman. Mr. Rex.
Just real quick on that. Yeah, I think that's tremendous. And I also would address Phil's comments, too, on the portfolio of projects. I really like that. We've talked about that, at least at the staff level, for subregional projects, when they, when they submit their package of projects for the board's consideration, that they, that they should come in hand with an understanding, with being able to describe what the benefits of that package are. And I like this whole concept of portfolio. Robin, on the oral presentations and the like, we have talked about that, and it's actually within one of our white papers, too. I really like that concept, and I hope that's something we can do. Because I think ultimately, what we'd like to do, we'd like to be able to get to a point with the regional projects that, the fear is that we're going to have, you know, 100 projects, right? We've got to be able to, you know, there has to be some litmus test as to what is transformative and what's not, so we can restrict the number of applications, so we can do that type of work. So we'll be talking more about that, and I'll bring that back to the, to the work group as well.
Director Walton.
Under project readiness, I wanted to just call the attention to the vetted through a public process. I think that's really important. And one of the things I like most about that is it gets the public out of pulling out of the intersection from their neighborhood because of the new development, and it gets them thinking regionally. And I think there's, I think probably everybody could benefit from more of that
Sure.
...thinking from the public. And it doesn't look to be a requirement. It's just more yes or no. And so I'd be, I'd be interested in making that either a requirement of the project, or providing more information, or more examples of what that might look like, more than just a local plan or policy document, but focus groups or whatever.
Thank you.
Director Brockett.
Great. Thank you. I have a few thoughts. One is, talking about the consistency with Dr. Cog plans, and getting to Director Knich's point about having some kind of objective criteria or ways to ground this a little bit more. One idea would be to ask people to show how their project will help the metrics that we're tracking in Metrovision, help us accomplish those goals. Because we have those really specific measures that we're trying to move the needle on, you know, vehicle miles traveled and non-SOV share, and there's a bunch of them in there, that have them describe how the project will help us accomplish those goals that we're looking to, that we have Metrovision. So that's one thought. Another one, you were talking about the transformative projects that we want to encourage, and what does that look like? You know, we might guide people by giving examples of previous projects that we think would qualify. And that could get a little tough, because people have different visions of that. But, you know, if we provided 10 or 15 examples, it might help give it, give people a little bit better of an idea of what we're looking for. And then I think there's something that we have to be careful about this, is striking the right balance in terms of the number of projects that we fund. Because, of course, the total funding that we have available is so far below what we could actually use, that one single project could use up all of our funding, right? Which I think would be a mistake. But at the same time, there might be 100 decent ones, you know, and then we would accomplish very little on each one of those. So we're going to have to think carefully about how to strike that balance. But one of the things we might think about would be a guideline of, you know, no single project would qualify for more than X percent of our total regional funding. So that's a concept to think about as we move forward. And then my last thought was just that Director Sernanek's idea of the basket of projects, linking that as a totality. The way that I understood that was that, is we're coming up with our final list of projects, is to say, how do they complement each other, right? So we, to keep that in mind. And so we can't ask an applicant to describe how they would complement other projects. But that's something for us to keep in mind. And as we develop criteria for which ones we accept, I really like that idea of thinking about how the final mix comes up with a complementary set of projects for the whole metro area.
Thank you. Director Jones.
So I agree with a whole lot of what's already been said. A couple of points. I do think having a mixture of quantitative and qualitative is really important. And yes, I agree that, that metrics around how you're going to benefit the region, certainly some of the Metrovision metrics would be highly appropriate. I think we should recognize that transformative can come in a lot of different flavors. And I do think it's useful for us to collectively think of, are there a set of regional projects that we all would agree, from the past, that were regionally transformative? So we're all sort of on the same page. But I would say that there's probably a diversity. It could be a single project like Central 70, which is, is at the core and highly used by people from all over the region. Or it could be a corridor project that unites multiple communities up and down a corridor. I'm, I'll speak to the one I know the best, the US-36 managed lane project, right? So there's different ways. So I think it's useful to have a collective understanding about the diversity of that. I think it's important for us to make sure that we fund across the diversity, to your category point. I think that, you know, it's useful to think, it's hard for a bike pad project to compete with a road capacity project. So if we don't want categories, then we have to think about the diversity of projects across a portfolio. And if we can do that, I think that that works fine. I also think that as part of the proving that you have some transformative benefit, you should be putting forth the metrics by which you will measure the success. And how will you know that the project was as successful as you're claiming it will be? So we really start a cultural, a culture of measuring what success looks like. And a couple other things, we're not really talking about percentages in different buckets. But I will say that I tend to think that this bucket is the most important, because what is transformative for the region, when we're thinking about our transportation system, means that we'll probably get the greatest mobility benefits. And so in a finite resource situation which we're in, I think that that probably should be the biggest bucket. And I know funding local projects is near and dear to our hearts, but I think as we explore the subregional allocation, we should start out smaller and see how that process works, and put more dollars in the regional bucket to begin with. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Director Shakti.
I just wanted to add that I think that the way that a lot of the large projects have been funded before is that CDOT or somebody shows up at the 11th hour and says, we need this money right now. And we don't get to, like, compare the different projects and think about where it could be effective. And so just the fact that, that we're doing this process, I think is a huge improvement in that.
Director Christman.
Speaking as a smaller community with a weighted vote, in essence, thank you all, disproportionate to our population, I do think that Director Sernanek's analogy or statement that we need to look at a portfolio of what each, at the end of the day, what would benefit the region most. Because many, or I should speak for my own community, we don't have a planning staff to assign for analysis of this. We are relying on this body to help make that decision, to make a good vote. So to have that type of analysis would be good.
good, in addition to having what both Robin and everyone else was talking about, which is the ability to evaluate it, so that the smaller communities can vote in a meaningful way.
I'm actually glad that you brought up the smaller communities, because I was going to comment on that very thing, that in the way the criteria and everything worked in the past, you know, quite frankly, because you don't have a planning department, and you might not have a plethora of projects that are ready to go, or whatever, a lot of the smaller communities felt like they were bypassed. And I think that if it's looked at as a more regional, like you were just saying, then it's easier for you to go to your constituents and say, listen, we didn't get anything specific to us, but this is going to help us get across town, or, you know, whatever. The other thing I wanted to mention, and Director Kanich had to leave, but she mentioned it first, I believe, and then several people added on, the interview and presentation idea, I think, is a really good one. I know in the construction and development world, that's a common thing, that you don't just look at the number and the inclusions and exclusions on a scope letter. You actually interview the project manager. So I think an interview and a presentation would be really good. And again, to Director Kanich's comment, it's not going to be who's got the prettiest picture. It's going to be who has the project that is ready to go and all that. Another thing that has happened in the past, and it happens for a variety of reasons, but when we talk about the project being ready to go, there have been projects that got funding and didn't go for a year, and didn't go for two years. And so that is another level of frustration, I think, in this board, is because people have long memories, and they go, wait a minute, that project in XY community took money from, I was the next one in line, and they were voted more favorably than me, and now it's 18 months out, and they haven't started? So that's, I think that was another level of frustration. Other questions or comments? Director Dosson.
I have a conflict between where it says, applications are limited to transformative projects, and then the second paragraph is, while all projects and program types are eligible. So if I, if you say to me, you can only submit programs that are transformational, transformative, then I'm going to basically define every project that's submitted as transformative. Or do we rather have it that we want to focus on transformative projects, and then define what that involves? Because I'll make sure that my project is definitely a transformative project,
Yeah.
...if you're eliminating it
Right.
...to transformative.
No, it's definitely the latter. And you caught that, yeah. That's, I'm not saying this needs some wordsmithing, there's no doubt, but yes, you're correct.
Rita, you do a good job with that, because you got an intersection over 36. That's very transformative for the region.
No, but that, no, what, what? Well, yeah, that's, we did this collaboratively
That's right.
...between Louisville. So we already, that's a transformative project that you can use. But I don't think that came out of this TIP. That came through our own funding and CDOT. So we've shown how we can collaborate and work together, Louisville and Superior, even without the TIP money.
I'm just sharing how creative you can be and innovative.
I know. Thank you. But we're censoring you, remember that, so.
Censoring or censuring?
Censurings.
Same.
Mr. X.
Kind of the same thing, just add a little "sh" to it.
No, thank you all very, this was tremendously helpful. This was a great discussion. You never know where these things are going to go. But this was really, really good for us. And I think what I'm, my takeaway from this is that, you know, we are headed in the right direction, and with, you know, some of the curves we talked about here today. So we'll bring something back to you, hopefully next month, if not next month, the month after, related to this specific topic. So thank you very much.
All right. Any final comments, questions, anything for the good of the cause? If not, at 6:14, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
There is no need to take your clicker home. They are worthless anywhere other than here. So please just leave it where it lies right now. Thank you.